Hello, madam. I actually kinda like it though. Lucy Japp.
That's true.
That is very true. It's sort of by me. All of the right, it's sort of by the hours. Return on our recent non compliance. Traditional items. By the return of time.
I know. So that last night.
Why don't they go right to a dump?
Well. He doesn't live in. Not that one, but does he live over here on Grant?
Yeah. He lives on around across the street from Mike.
Yeah, his mother's house or whatever, yeah. Well, that's good. That's where he lived, they have for a long time. They've been living off there for a long, long time.
Twenty years?
Place is a dump. The neighbors had talked about the son of one of the neighbors yesterday and he said the place should be burnt down.
There were.
Which one is that, Al? What's after two and a half? Uh. Three down.
We have to wait till noon with our time. Birds, bird last in the day.
Yeah.
See right up on the road.
So anyway.
It's somewhere down there, isn't that how that goes? There's gotta be one down there somewhere. It's only eighteen hundred square feet, it's gotta be in there somewhere in a box.
Thirteen.
Thirteen hundred square feet. And full of boxes. The other thing is when you say it's to every department, not just the one. Yeah, unless you really. Yeah, but that'd be the. It's clerk, it's clerk, it's fire, it's fire, frankly.
No, I mean.
Maybe what police should say, cause it's a contract, it's gotta get through. Sure.
A lot. Don't get me going on that because I have a. Cause that's what they want.
There's well over a million.
Really?
Oh, I'm ninety-nine percent sure. Yep, it's a long history. Happy to tell you after.
Training from coming.
No, no, I gave up. I gave up coming ten years ago, yes. We got a few seconds. Yes. Uh, they wanted like a Morris Ocean. Police officer, one police officer. And then they said, well, you know, a police officer, you gotta have a chief, then you have a police officer. They have certain documents that have to be signed by the, by the. By the executive, so, and he said, but don't worry, I'll be the chief, but I'm gonna be a working chief. And I'm gonna be out in, you know, well, it has grown since then. And this is college, you know, but it's a grown through the budget process. You know, people have come in and wanted another officer this year, and another officer this year, and another officer this year. This chief, yeah, this chief is really a pretty much a working chief. The new guy.
The new guy.
Yeah, um, and he talks about. Sure. Lieutenant or whatever, is the lieutenant after the chief, sergeant after. He was never in the military, so I don't know. Sorry? Yeah, then I don't remember, lieutenant, captain, sergeant.
What do they do? It's not like they're located on the corner.
You can read their reports and the house checks.
I was gonna say, no, sorry.
Patrol the roads.
I'm gonna call the meeting order. Maybe? Alright, calling meeting order. It is June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, for the village board meeting here for the village of Waukesha. Uh, stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, if you could do a roll call?
Stigler.
Here.
Wait.
Here.
Niles.
Here.
Adams.
Here.
Buckholz.
Here. Is everybody good? Uh, open meeting compliance check. Agenda was posted on the three village public notice boards, the website, and distributed to news media in accordance with the meeting laws honor before the twenty-fifth of June.
Yes, that is correct.
Very good. Up next, citizen comments, anyone like to come up and speak? Sandy?
Good evening, Sandy Ham, west two thirty, south thirty-eight, twenty-seven, Milky Way Road. I was pleased to see the firework issue there at the end of the agenda, and I did print out the firework ordinance. Maybe if I. Anyway, I noticed the amendment to the agenda and I was not sure why it was being proposed, I'm not sure if it was the attorney or if it was Sean, the planner, or what, but. Man, I'm always in favor of public hearings, um, but on the other hand, I'm not sure what would change if we had a public hearing, so I'm just confused by that, and I know you don't answer questions during this period, but I was unsure why we'd do that. So the firework regulations, I, I'm interested in restricting fireworks more than we, we have today, but in reading this, I, I got lost, and, and I don't know if anyone else took the time to read through it. Items, um, let's see, well, certainly five and six and one, I think it's one, anyway, no, three, three, five and six. It seems like there's a redundancy at the end of those sentences, and it says, designed to produce audible or visual, visible effects, or to produce audible and visible effects. So that's on items three, five and six, I don't know what, I think it's just a typo or something like that, but I looked online, it's there too. And then going back up to the first item under A where it starts to define fireworks, I have a problem with the English construction of this, and my reading of it is, is, is it says, what a firework is. Fireworks means anything, and then it lists a bunch of stuff, or combustion which does not have another common use, comma, including colon, that to me should be listing things that are fireworks. And instead, it's, I think, listing things that aren't fireworks. So, and I don't know who drafted this, maybe it was taken from the state or whatever, but, um, it doesn't make sense to me, and I invite people to take a look at it. Under C, public displays, um, I, most of that I would strike, I mean, I don't, I don't know why anybody's entitled to do fireworks, but, um, in any case, cause it, pretty much anybody, a resident or a non-resident, anyway. But the one that stuck out to me was agricultural producers for the protection of crops, I think it belongs in a separate section by itself, it has nothing to do with public displays of fireworks, nor is it done for entertainment purposes. So, I, I think the whole thing needs to be worked over, and I hope that in the process, we can reduce the number of fireworks. Certainly, it's, it's a negative occurrence for the dogs over at Kunzie's or the veterans nearby or whatever, it was, it was so loud at our house the other night, I think it was last night or the night before, I mean, it, we could see everything, not from the ground level, but coming through the trees and in the opening space, and went on for ages. So, and the other thing is, that I would mention is, I don't know, somewhere in here it talks about the fee, uh, for fireworks permit, and I think we're charging a hundred dollars. And I checked around the local municipalities, Brookfield is a hundred dollars, others are less, some are more, um, but, I don't know, put on a small display is gonna be three to five, and, you know, a twenty-minute display, it's about a thousand dollars a minute is what it costs. And maybe one way to discourage the use of fireworks that, you know, that aren't the Fourth of July, or don't have some other purpose just for a wedding or something, charge a thousand dollars. It's only one-fifth of the cost, putting on a forty thousand dollar wedding, yeah, town could take that, village could take that money and apply it to the fire department. So anyway, I think there's a lot of creative ways to look at this, but it, it clearly needs reconstruction, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments? Alright, with no others, we'll move on, uh, reports, clerk treasurer?
It's in the packet.
Uh, let's see. Any questions on that one? From the board? Or comments? Trying to get through here. Uh. We do have, uh, citizen communication from residents regarding the river road that came up, so that one, as you see, is listed on page three, is case closed on six, three of twenty-five, but I anticipate that's not going to be closed at this point based on, uh, what was emailed today, so just be aware of that. And at least one of them, I believe, is on our agenda for the night anyway, so, um, public works, any questions on that? Okay, fire department? Chief, you have anything you wanna add? Alright, sheriff's report's in there, deputy's not here tonight, not sure, guess when they're busy? Uh, nothing on that one? Weed commissioner, anything? Mike, anything to expand on besides what's there? Okay, and then non-compliance is part of the clerk's one, I already mentioned a piece of that, um, anything else on that? Very silent, okay, moving on. Approval of previous meeting minutes for May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. They're in your packets. Comments, questions, concerns, motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five minutes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, it's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes for the meeting on May twenty-two, twenty twenty-five, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, anyone opposed? Yeah, passes. Uh, discussion and possible action items for A, discussion and possible action on whether to schedule a public hearing on the signage request for petitioner Kelly Hanaway, doing business as Milwaukee Sign Company, for the property located at, or owned by, Waukesha State Bank, at South thirty-one West two five nine nine five Sunset Drive, tax key W A K T one three five eight nine eight nine. For the approval of a double-sided monument sign, including an electronic message center and a wall-supported sign to replace existing signage. We modified the agenda, um, as was noted a few minutes ago by the residents, that, um, in the past, we haven't had this on the agenda, but it's been discussed in these sign requests, uh, that it is up to the board if they wanna have one, and so if you were to want to have a meeting for a public hearing that is for this gentleman, then we wanted to add that so that you had the ability to make a motion to that effect. So, uh, that's the only reason why we added this on, it's not to muddy the waters or anything like that, but it would be that we'd have to come back next month with proper notice if you guys wanted to do one, so. Having reviewed the packet, anybody have any interest in a public hearing, or always you can move on to B, which is discussing approving it.
No one has a request, and to answer the question, I was the one who asked that it be put on the agenda because the ordinance requires a determination as to whether or not there's going to be a public hearing, we've never had a public hearing, but at the school, they decided to hold a public hearing, and that was a message board also, and so I think it's better practice, and so the potentiality of a public hearing that we have is as a separate agenda item, just so it wasn't missed. And somebody said, how come you held a public hearing for the school, but you didn't hold it here, I wanted to have the discussion, so it's a motion, uh, that there, the board feels there's no need to hold a public hearing would be the motion, or there is a motion to, uh, feels that there should be a public hearing. The determination the last time was because it was in more of a residential area, your clerk has researched, there's only one residence within three hundred feet, and it's not particularly facing this sign, just to give you the background. So it's not like the staff is recommending, the staff is just saying, I'm saying, I think it's a better practice, since they have to make the determination anyway, that it be an agenda item.
So with that, as, as he mentioned, Chris went back and looked, and that's not how we did it in the past, but we'll just, in the future, move on with the same practices tonight that way, just so it is cleaner. Alright, I'll make a motion to not have a public hear, hearing related to the signage request for Milwaukee Sign Company and Waukesha State Bank.
I'll second that.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, it's been moved and seconded to, um, decline on a public hearing for this request, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, anyone oppose? Alright, that passes, moving on to the discussion and possible action on the signage request then, for the same, um, topic. So it's in the packet, hopefully you were able to see that in there, uh, there is staff recommendations and typical restrictions in there as far as illumination, uh, direction, size, all of those things. In our staff meeting, we had one item that we discussed on this, if you look at the photographs that were in the packets, the way that it, it, it shows in the larger view of the sign, um, it has like a, a full color photograph, uh, which I guess would be the second page of the packet of, related to this topic. Um, and the photograph almost kinda gives it the, the view that, that's like a video versus a screenshot of it, like a, obviously, it's, it's a picture in our packet, but the way that it looks almost kinda makes it look like that's part of a video that's paused when the, you know, when the picture's made, so, um, I just wanna point that out that it is in there as. The video's not permitted. Correct, it's, trying to figure out where that was again. If somebody sees it before I find out, I can call it out. It's six A, the advertisements shall not be animated, flashing, scrolling, or revolving, so a video is not allowed on it, it's a still photo, if there's gonna be a photo, um, just wanted to point that out based on what the photographs look like in the, the packet itself, so. They are requesting the sign, as you can see in the, um, they're gonna be building a new one, it's gonna be out closer to Sunset Drive there, and, uh, the typical staff recommendations are in the packet as well. Any discussion or thoughts on it?
The big tall one that's there is coming down? Correct?
Be my understanding.
That's what it says here, yeah.
Yeah. Right, cause this will be north of that location then, right, that'll be, it's gonna be up closer to the sidewalk on Sunset, there's a, a stationary sign out there now that kinda gives you like directions on pulling into the drive-through and stuff, and it's gonna be north of that, closer to the entrance, uh, from Sunset.
I'll make a motion, we approve the signage.
Okay.
For State Bank.
With the, um. Thank you.
With the planner's recommendations.
Recommendations, we can.
If there's no videos, then it's all snapshot or.
Got it. Alright, that's a motion on the floor, anyone second that?
I'll second that.
Alright, it's been moved, any further discussion? There's a motion on the floor to approve the signage requests, uh, for remodeling project at Waukesha State Bank, um, with the staff's recommendations, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, that passes. Merlin Minster Extension, update to bring the property located at west two sixty-one, thirty-five, forty, south thirty-five, forty-seven, Genesee Road, into compliance, uh, anyone from the family here? No, okay, uh, there was a, a letter handwritten and sent to the, uh, to the village clerk from Merlin, uh, this one doesn't have the business card attached to it, like we talked about last time, uh, but he basically repeats his, um, physical, physical conditions that limit his ability to get this done, uh, and has asked in writing here to get an additional thirty days to work on cleaning up the property. It's also noted in here that he wants to meet with the building inspector to verify that, uh, what they're doing on the property actually comes into compliance, uh, so that they have a better understanding of what needs to be done, I believe, based on how this is worded, so, he's asking for more time. If you recall, this is the one that's on the corner of the bypass, uh, in Genesee.
What was his extension last time?
Uh, it was through tonight, it was thirty days.
Oh, it's thirty days?
To go another, another month, um, I drive by there once, if not multiple times a day, and.
Just gotta been working on it.
On the first side of this one, the, the letter went on initially for the initial portion of the complaint, there was quite a bit of activity, and I've noticed it's more on the side of, like, working on maybe, um, tree stumps and things like that, versus like cleaning up the garbage kind of, the piles of stuff that's in the driveway that's completely exposed to the streets, so. That's where I guess, with him saying he's, um, wanting to meet the building inspector, it might be wise to do that, to make sure that they're doing actually what the issue is, to, to come into compliance.
I'll make a motion, give him a thirty-day extension so we can meet with the building inspector, get things cleaned up.
Okay, motion to extend for thirty days?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, uh. More specifically, he's stating thirty days, but can I, may I propose that your motion is to be specific to extend it to July twenty-fourth, which should be the next meeting to discuss it, versus thirty days, cause that may not line up to be the same.
That's perfect, that's fine with me, you can change that, it's twenty-fourth.
Roger, you agree with the.
I will, yeah, I will second it.
Okay. Alright, any further discussion on it?
I think maybe you oughta, you send the letter, give him the hours that the building inspector's here, cause he's kind of only in certain hours of the.
The gentleman does not get out and about himself.
So he's asking that the building inspector go to his house?
No, I think to talk and then to go over and inspect.
Oh, he, he can call, it doesn't have to necessarily be face to face.
I guess, you know, I just know the hours are.
And his first letter indicated that his son is living at the residence as well, so.
Oh, alright.
The son could be there too.
Yeah.
Cause he's, he's roughly eighty, correct? So, cause it's an adult son, it's not like it's a fifteen-year-old. So, any other discussion? Alright, motion on the floor is to extend, uh, the compliance, um, bringing the, the property into compliance with an extension, getting the, the property owners until July twenty-fourth of twenty-five, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Alright, up next is the fire department EMS Act one oh two fund budget amendment. Hopefully you're able to see that in the packet there, um. Chief, you wanna come up, discuss? Good evening. So what you'll see in your packet there is the Act one oh two funds, uh, obviously is, uh, offset to our general fund, it's specific for the fire department needs, and in addition to that, it's also specific items that you can purchase through the, those funds. The items requested are on that list from the, that we get from the state, um, that we can, it kinda offsets our general budget, it helps us give some relief, and it's pretty good timing because some of the items on there, uh, our department would like to go with, the first one you'll see is the, the upgraded laryngoscope. The, uh, first attempt success rate with these are very high, in the ninety percent, our brilliant medical director is also pushing us for the capabilities of some recording that he can go back and see attempts, and, you know, really good training that way, and it, it is a, a definite upgrade to our, our ambulance fleet, um, for our members, uh, they all trial them, or, uh, all the ones that attended the meeting, and everyone seems to really enjoy them and think that there'll be a, a benefit to our, our skills in the field. So that's that first item with the laryngoscope, the second one is, uh, some, uh, they call the lapel mics, basically when you see us with radios on, the part that has the cable and the, the talk, um, push to talk feature, uh, we got about half of them last year through our general budget, uh, this year, we're looking at using the Act one oh two funds for it to get the other half, and, uh, we've had some communication shortcomings with the current ones that we are replacing, that's why there is a need there. Uh, obviously, when you're in fires, accidents, anything, in communication's vital, so that's why we're looking at upgrading these, these radio mics to complement our, our, our radio fleet, so, those are the two items you see there with the cost attached to it.
The scopes for the board is, if it wasn't said, I didn't hear it before, but it's for two of them, one for each rig.
Yep.
One for each ambulance, um, and then it's fourteen of the mics, which is in the bottom of the page there in the packet, but, uh, so your quote is higher than the dollar amount listed for requests, I don't know if you saw my email, but I.
Yeah, and I, I actually looked at some investigation on that, then, I'm going off the numbers that are, that we have currently, and they are a little different than those, and I think that might be where the increase is, so I did get the secondary quote from two way radios dot com, and that was actually a little higher than the Bay, Baycom quote, by like a hundred dollars only, but it, they were very consistent at that same mark, so. But yeah, I think that's the, that's the difference, is when I'm plugging in that one-for-one number, it is a, a little bit of a different mic, I think that's where the, that's where the.
From what we had originally talked about?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
The, I think the numbers you're putting in are absolutely correct on the preliminary stuff, and then it gets, when it gets to the, those finite numbers that tail off on it, those are a little different, so.
Alright, I guess the reason I say that is because the, the quote you have from Baycom is more than what you have in your, um, budget amendment, so.
Correct.
You have to probably either go with less, or find other funds in the Act one oh two to pay for the extras?
Okay, yeah, we'd be able to come up with something, yeah, we'll figure out a workaround for that.
So we're keeping it at eight thousand, is, I guess, my point.
Unless if, if this, are we able to, we, we can't go any higher at this point, right, that number is, um, what it is, right? And if that's the case, then yeah, we will definitely find a, a way to accommodate the shortcomings there.
Okay.
So.
So, the money comes in July from Act one oh two each year, we typically are budgeting that money for next year's budget, spend it, um, in the, the subsequent year, uh, just because we don't know until March how much money comes in the Act one oh two from the state, so, um, this is gonna be drawing from what we would be budgeting next year, cause we're gonna spend it this year versus next year, so it, um, it was what, about thirty-five thousand, I think, is what we came?
Yeah.
Thirty-seven thousand, so.
Yep.
It'll be, what, twenty-four-ish next year instead of thirty-seven for the budget. We're spending ahead of time by doing this, so. It's gonna be spent on it either way, it's just we're doing it quicker so they can get their equipment quicker.
That's exactly it, I was just gonna mirror that, is, it, we're, it's, it's coming out of the same budget, just five, five months sooner.
Sure, and maybe five months cheaper when rates go up and.
Here, you are not wrong there.
So, any, uh, discussion, discussion from the board on it?
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
I, as far as what these are, okay, this is something.
Yeah.
You buy, okay, the two we're buying are in the truck, or are they on the person, on the person?
I'll get in a little bit more detail, that's a good question, these are actually very innovative, they're on the ambulances, so it'd be one for each pack that we bring into somebody's home, and what it does is, we open up somebody's airway when they're not breathing on their own, and we've, we use these laryngoscopes to open up their airway, and we stick a breathing tube in, and then we breathe for that person.
So you're doing a tracheotomy?
No, that's cutting, so. No, that's cutting, so, so if you ever watch any of the nine one one shows or anything where there, there's a guy unconscious on the ground.
Yes.
And they stick what looks kind of like a J in the, in the person's mouth and then they're looking in there and they push a tube in, this is what they're doing.
Oh, I see.
So it's getting a tube through their mouth down into their throat so that you can provide oxygen.
And this technology has grown, when I started, it was just, you had a flashlight bulb that you were looking at anatomy, now it's all video recorded and you're looking at a screen in high def. And it significantly helps you out, along with the technology of the blades themselves have improved with hyperangular blades and such, so. The technology and with something so important as breathing for somebody, that's why we want to stay on the cutting edge of, of this technology is to keep improving our skills. And have, we really look at the first try attempt to be successful, that way we can get breaths on board, you know, as soon as we can.
You said blades, what, okay, what, how does the blade fit into this?
Uh, the laryngoscope is the part that you would be handling, the blade, there's different attachment blades depending on someone's anatomy of which one you choose. And the blade is essentially a piece of that handle that just clips on and that's the part that actually opens up the airway.
Alright.
If that makes sense, yeah, I can, I can, yeah, I should have brought one, that would have been easier, but yeah, it's all kind of all one unit.
Kind of thinking like if you had a, a garden shovel, you had the same pole you're using with your hands, but the shovel part of the end comes off. And you're going from a spade to maybe your big snow shovel or something like that, it's changing that tip on the end. Because it could be a, a larger individual, smaller individual child, things like that, right?
Yep, absolutely.
What's that?
It, it, it's, it's a vital, it's a vital piece of our equipment that we use regularly to, obviously in serious calls.
Innovation?
Yeah. Any other questions? Would it be appropriate for a motion to approve this? Or to, to deny it?
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment.
Alright, motion to approve by Stu?
Act one oh two.
I'll second it.
And Bob seconds. Any further discussion? Alright, motion on the floor is to approve the budget amendment requested by the fire department for the Act one oh two funds for these specific purchases as described. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Minutes need to reflect that it was unanimous vote?
Thank you. Mr. Supermajority?
Thank you for your continued support, appreciate it very much.
So just make sure the, the minutes reflect that it's five and zero. Okay? Thank you. Up next, Citizen Bank CD maturity with a date, maturity date of July eighth, so it's before the next meeting. What's the dollar amount on this one again?
Oh, hold on.
It's not in the packet?
No, because I just got the notice. Maturity value is thirty thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-four cents.
Okay. When we talked to staff, you said that you had talked to the other banks or looked at the others and Citizen was the best option, or Landmark, Landmark's in there too, but.
Yeah, Landmark was for reference, Associated Bank was also in there for reference, right now Citizen's Bank has a seven month special for four point two five APY. That seemed to kind of beat out all of them.
Landmark has the same but for twelve months.
Yeah. Landmark's a little harder to work with.
But it's already in Citizen Bank, so it's just rolling it over in the same location. And seven months puts us what into, just into the new year, when we, you know, talk here soon about budgets. For twenty-six.
I will make a motion that we redo the CD for a seven month special at four twenty-five, four point one, two five percent at Citizen's Bank.
Okay. Motion by Stu?
I'll second it.
Motion by Stu, seconded by Roger to approve the rollover of the CD with Citizen Bank for the seven month special with the interest rate of four one seven and APY of four two five. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries unanimous again, thank you. Moving right along here tonight, that's good, alcohol beverage license applications. Up first is the license renewal for Legend at Merrill Hills LLC. Chris, any comments?
Nope, they got all their paperwork in and looks good, paid the fee.
Alright.
Chris, am I to say that those, that the fees on this one are a hundred dollars and four hundred dollars, is that correct? Or am I missing one there?
Yes, that's what they all are for class B liquor and beer, yes.
Okay.
Legends is the only one that has a cigarette license, so, permit, so it will be a little, their total at the top of the page is a little different.
What's handwritten for twenty-five dollars in the fees on the top right, I can't read that.
That's the cigarette license.
Oh, okay. Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the alcohol beverage license renewal for Legend at Merrill Hills LLC.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor of approving the renewal for Legends at Merrill Hills, say aye.
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 Aye, anyone oppose?
I'm going to recuse.
Alright, so. Four, four, zero against and one abstention. Thank you. Alcohol beverage license renewal for Lilac Acres Farm.
Yep, they got all their paperwork in and paid the appropriate fee.
This is the event barn on Lawnsdale, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any comments, questions, discussion on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve the alcohol beverage license.
Okay. Been motioned by Al for the renewal for. Lilac Acres Farm on Lawnsdale.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor for approving the renewal for Lilac Acres Farm, say aye.
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 Aye, anyone oppose? Motion carries. Onto the next one, renewal for the Neighbor's Bar and Grill on Greenfield.
Same thing, they filled out the paperwork and paid the permit fees.
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion we approved the alcohol license for Neighbor's Bar and Grill.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Stu, seconded by Al, with the, Chris, the boxes that you blank out, did you blank out the premises address too? Or does that not fill out?
In the, in the packet, it was not filled out, but he did come in yesterday and completed that.
Corrected it?
Corrected it, yes.
Okay, because I was going to say it doesn't even have the address on Greenfield, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
He missed that.
Okay, so that's corrected, alright, that was Stu and Al, correct?
Correct, yes.
Alright. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to approve the renewal for the alcohol license for Neighbor's Bar and Grill on Greenfield, those in favor, say aye.
I just ask one question, because it's got down here, we got operators licenses down, is, is part of this, is that?
They're paying for the licenses that are coming up later in the.
That's what I'm saying, I guess, we haven't even approved them, but are we doing that in this and?
Not with this one, they pay, they write a big check for everything.
Okay.
We would just have to refund it if we deny those, alright?
Alright, that's kind of where I was going, alright, fine.
Okay. Alright, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Tally's Tap and Eatery on Sunset?
Uh, she is, came in and filled, there was a couple boxes she missed, she came in and corrected those yesterday, so they're updated in my paperwork and then she paid the appropriate fees.
Okay. Just backing up one quick second. The license application is for the, sorry, I'm on the wrong thing, looking at the wrong thing, disregard, Tally's Tap and Eatery, moving on there. Uh, any discussion on that one?
I would just note that we never recommend you license the entire premise, this was done many, many years ago by prior boards, I think before I started. I went back and checked, we can't change the legal description if that's what you, your predecessors approved, but going forward, whenever you look at a premise, you don't want to license absolutely everything. Because that, as you have very little regulation, there's a court case on that and so we ask that it be very specific going forward and there's nothing we can do about it at this point, it's just something to think about in the future. If they ever come in for a new license, I would strongly recommend you not license the entire property, the entire parking lot, things like that, that would allow them to set up bars in the parking lot.
Sure.
You know, and that's not your intent, you know, or probably even their intent.
So they can do that now?
They can. And there's nothing you knew about it because that's the way here, it was originally issued, if they change it, then it's a new license and then you can have a discussion. Yeah, just point out going forward, you do not want to license an entire property if you don't have it.
What does the language have to say?
Within the four walls of the building is common and you probably saw that in a couple of the other ones, I think Neighbor says within the four walls and then the back deck or something.
Yeah.
They don't, they don't license their entire parking lot, just to give an example.
Okay.
If they just put the address on there, that, that's what the error, that's when the Supreme Court said, well, you may have inadvertently, and in that case, it was like a fifty acre parcel.
Okay.
And it gets worse than that, they set up a gentleman's club in one of the outbuildings and there was nothing anybody could do about it, that's what the court case was all about. Always a unique fact situation, I'm trying to be discreet.
Sure.
Scouts in the audience.
I'm sure Dad appreciates that, at least one in the room.
Doing his governmental merit or public service duties tonight.
Duly noted. Alright, any, so Roger, I guess to, to what John was saying there, if you look at Lilac Farms, there's, their language says specifically, within the four walls of the reception hall, ceremony barn, wedding house and event patio, to be more specific to that effect.
That's pretty specific.
Right, so we will do this with renewals subsequently after today's date now, or is, do we have to do, we can't do anything?
Because this is how it was approved originally, so it stays the same moving forward?
But you ever get a new license in, I'm, I'm giving a little CLE, CLE presentation here, if you get a new license in, always carefully check the.
Oh, I see, so, so if they sold the property and it's no, no longer Tally, it's Roger's Tavern, something like that, right, that's where it would change? What's that? I got that.
Very respectful of their rights and they have the rights that they have.
Alright, any, anything further, or I think we, we'd be appropriate to put a motion on the floor?
I'll move that we, that we authorize Tally's Tap and Eatery to be, for, for license for the next period.
Okay, to renew the license?
Renew the license.
Okay. Uh, I'll second it, just to keep things moving. All those in favor of renewing the Tally Tap and Eatery alcohol license, say aye.
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 Aye, anyone oppose? Motion carries. Moving on specifically to operator's license, see exhibit A, it says. And to exhibit A. There's a long list there, these are all the renewals, correct?
Correct.
And there's no change in any of those that we need to be concerned about?
Uh, no, there are the new ones listed on there, but they are listed separately on the.
Right.
Agenda to deal with the new ones separately.
Okay. Just from my own, I guess, understanding then, so do, do each of them have to fill out the same type of document then, so we know if there's background history and things?
Yep, everyone fills out the same.
Okay, so there's no changes to the renewals then from what would have been approved last year then?
Correct.
Okay. So it could be one motion to approve all of those on the exhibits minus the ones with the asterisk, because those are separate agenda items.
Are we including the temporary on all of those as well, so it's G through N?
No.
No, G, G is just, just renewing all of the current existing ones on the, the list that's in the packet. But there are a few in the packet, in the list in the packet have asterisks, because those are the ones that are identified as the additional items on the agenda after this. Yeah, those are new ones, not renewals.
Yes.
Correct.
I will move to approve the operator's license list as presented, excluding the, the ones that are not new.
Okay. Bob moved, or made the motion to approve the, the licenses as in exhibit A minus the new ones, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the list of operator licenses and exhibits, say aye.
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 Aye, anyone oppose? Motion carries. Alright, so the individual licenses on Samuel Beckham for the Legend at Merrill Hills.
There was no record found for him.
Everything else is there in order?
Yep, everything else is in order, he paid his fee, did the paperwork.
Alright, I'll move to approve the operator's license for Samuel Beckham.
Him, I had a question on.
Sure.
He doesn't have the, that he completed the. The alcohol serving class. But he does have a previous license, so.
Yeah, that's.
Does he have to have that or not?
No, he's, it's that or a previous license.
It's valid, the license he has shows it's valid through twenty-seven.
Okay, good.
According to the sec, the next page in the packet there. But that's the Heartland one, that's not, I guess to your point, it's not their certificate.
No, it's their.
It's Legend, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So he must have had a certificate at one time.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so I made the motion, anyone second that one?
I can second that.
Any further discussion on approving the license for Samuel Beckham, or Beckman, excuse me? Alright, all those in favor approving the operator's license for Samuel Beckham, Beckman, I don't know why I keep doing that, for the Legend at Merrill Hills, say aye.
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 Aye, anyone oppose?
I recuse myself.
Alright.
Please.
Four, zero and one abstention, got it? Operator's license for Quinn Hildenbrandt for the Legend at Merrill Hills. This one, I'm going to. Make a motion that we request Mr. Hildenbrandt to come to the next meeting and therefore we table his application. So that he can discuss some things that are on his packet that I would like him to come in and discuss, without getting into details. There's some discrepancies between what he has listed on his packet compared to his criminal record.
Uh, what do you, what date do you mean by next meeting?
Uh, we could do the June tenth, if that's the date, sorry, July tenth, yes, the, the very next meeting.
That's information we don't have?
Uh, we have the background packet, but it's not something that should be aired.
I don't put the background checks on the packets.
Okay.
But I, I guess I'll say publicly, there's some discrepancies from how, how he has his packet listed for his, his criminal background, that he needs to come and answer to us before we would approve it. So, my motion is to table his application for his operator's license until the meeting on June tenth.
Yes.
That's the correct date?
Would that be a.
Sorry, June tenth, I said it again.
Would that be, uh, he's going to come to the meeting and we are going to ask him, and we are going to ask him publicly about those things?
We would ask him to explain the discrepancies in his packet and he can explain them to us, but we're not going to give him the details, he'll explain them to us.
Okay.
Is there a second to my motion?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? So just so that's clear, the, the motion would be that you direct him to come to that meeting?
Yeah.
By letter or notice?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor of tabling Quinn Hildenbrandt to the next meeting on July tenth? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay. Operator's license for Nathan McFadden for the Legend at Merrill Hills. Everything in there, Chris?
Yeah, no record found, everything looked good.
And he has his certificate, it's checked, it's there.
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion on his? Anybody in motion?
I'm making motion to approve Nathan's application.
I'll make the motion, anyone second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? Any further discussion for Nathan McFadden's operators license request or application? All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, anyone oppose?
I'll abstain.
Stu's abstaining. Okay. Operators license for Maya DeLeon for Lilac Acres Farm. Is that the correct term, her title?
Um, no record, no record found, she completed the application and paid her permit fee.
I'll make a motion to approve Maya's application.
All right, I'll make the motion, anyone second?
I'll second it.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor for approving Maya DeLeon's license, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, anyone oppose? That carries. Uh, last one is a cigarette and tobacco license renewal for Legend at Merrill Hills LLC.
They're the only ones in the municipality that have a cigarette license and they just sell tobacco products. They paid the fee and, uh, handed in the correct paperwork.
Okay, discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the tobacco license for Legends.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Motion by Bob, uh, second by Roger to approve the cigarette and tobacco license renewal for the Legend at Merrill Hills. Those in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Those abstaining, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone nodding for it? Got it? So, temporary alcohol beverage license for the Kiwani Club of Waukesha Early Risers for July twelfth and thirteen and September twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Chris?
They do this, um, pretty much every year and these are pretty much the same weekends. He handed in the paperwork and, um, paid the fee and he is also listed on the, uh, operators licenses, so he receives an operators license also.
It's very hard to read.
Yes, I will agree with you.
Where is this actually physically taking place?
Pialas.
Pialas.
Nursery.
It shows on page two, I believe.
Yeah, I can't read it, that's why I asked.
No, I know, I can't read it either.
Okay.
This is pretty much a annual event, I've been doing it for years.
And that's fine, I just.
What, what is this event? I mean, keep on, I'm, I'm familiar with the early risers, but, um, how early are they gonna be serving alcoholic beverages?
It'd be.
Well, I don't know if it's early, that, that, isn't it the issue that they're just, that's their name is early risers, I'm not sure that they're gonna be there, or they're at six o'clock in the morning drinking beer.
Yeah, that's normal business hours at Pialas, that's, this is where the fire department comes out with their trucks and sheriff usually comes with a squad or.
Yeah.
Things like that, so it's, it's just, uh, it's two times a year that Pialas ho- holds a little event down their grounds during their business hours.
Oh, that thing?
Probably bring in more business and they do like a broad fry out there.
Throw it in your backyard. I can see it, I can see when they, when they, when the ladder trucks go up, it's exciting. Kids love it.
There you go.
I understand.
All right, having said all that, there are a motion on the floor to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor, temporary liquor license for, uh, Kiwanis Early Risers Club.
All right, motion by Bob. Stu, were you gonna say something?
I'll second.
Okay. Stu's gonna second, any further discussion? Very well, all those in favor of approving the temporary alcohol license for the Kiwani Club of the Waukesha Early Risers, who wake up earlier, Roger? Those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, moving along, good pace tonight. Uh, twenty-five, twenty-six, no plow contract update. Uh, I know it's been a question in the last month or a couple of months as far as, um, what Workman was gonna do, I did reach out and speak to them, uh, about a week ago. And, uh, they did indicate that, uh, they are wanting to proceed with a one-year contract renewal, which is part of the existing contract. So, um, all they're just wanting is basically like an email from us saying that, uh, we acknowledge that and, um, everything in the contract stays as is, because it's just a, a one-year extension on, on their part that's.
How many extensions can they take?
Up to three years.
So how many have we, is this the first one?
This will be the first one, I believe, because we signed it last year. So we'd have up to two more years that they have the ability to exercise the right to extend it another year, year by year.
And our relationship with, ship with him re- remains solid?
Very, very well, actually, um. Uh, talking to Rob earlier tonight, um, on the phone before the meeting, he, uh, he was out with Workman, working on one of our, um, projects that we've discussed over the last year. So they're, they're working pretty well together.
Very good.
So, no motions, I think that, at this point, I don't believe they're necessary, because it's, again, it's they're exercising the right in the, the contract, I just wanted to publicly, I guess, make you guys all aware that that's proceeding, so we're covered for next year. And, um, it was in there last year, as far as there was a day or a couple of days that they were not available, that they'd work out with Public Works and they indicated the same, because it's like their Christmas party and things for the company, so they'll communicate with Rob and Chris on that.
And the weatherman? Gotta talk to the weatherman, make sure it doesn't snow those days. I think the president's in charge of that.
Sunny and nice every day then. All right, moving on then, uh, review and discussion of ordinance sixteen dash two for the regulation of fireworks. Before we get off into discussion on, I guess, a couple of things, um, I brought this before the, the, the meeting tonight for the board, because when we, if you recall, the last meeting or last month's meeting, discussing, um, approving one of the fireworks applications, I believe it was Roger and Bob, um, signaled that they had some interest in revisiting the ordinance as far as our regulations and. Wanted to bring it before everybody, so that you guys could discuss, discuss what your thoughts are if we were to make changes. Before we go into that, um, because it was brought up as far as what, uh, public comments were with relation to how our ordinance is worded, with the exception, I would agree that it's like number three, where it says to produce audible and visual effects, or to produce audible and visual effects, is repetition that we should remove. The language, the rest of that is almost identical word for word to the state law regarding definitions of fireworks and such. So, if you look at state law, uh, or state statute one, six, seven, point, one, zero, you'll see that pretty much is identical word for word to what Wisconsin identifies as fireworks. And even going on as far as, um. Well, it's pretty much, if you look at one sixty-seven, ten, it's almost identical. The, the C, public displays portion, where it's talking about public authority fair association amusement park, that's again, word for word to the state law and, um, so it's just repeating that. So if anything, maybe revisiting maybe to, to stay in conformance, if they made changes to their law, if there was, um, one of the numbers that maybe was added or changed or something like that, but otherwise, those are identical to state law at this point. So I'll open up to you guys, you're the ones that wanted to talk about it.
Well, I guess, my concern was the people that have said that they don't, we cannot have fireworks, or work something out with, because the ones that, or the problem was at Merrill Hills with the weddings. People in neighborhood don't know that they're gonna be setting fireworks off at, you know, let's say the eleventh of August, you know, for a wedding.
I mean, even the duplication.
Yeah.
Oh, it is.
Oh.
One is to produce or does produce.
Okay, sorry, sorry to interrupt you, Bob, the, John was just noticing that the state law actually has the same repetition in those wordings. So it's literally just copy and paste from the statute. Go ahead, sorry.
So can we supersede the state statutes and change it, or did? I guess what's the point? No, I think that was the reason it was brought to my attention, was the fact that the, the, people are not aware of fireworks going off, uh, other than Fourth of July and things like that. I mean, you got, everybody's graduation parties now, there's fireworks and, I mean, the dogs turn into panic and barking, or not barking, but some dogs don't handle the noise very well and then people are concerned about that, I don't know.
Well, were we, were we, um, not cons, uh, thinking about having them, if they wanna have the fireworks, um, putting out some kind of notification in the neighborhood? We were talking about that and I don't know, is that, is that feasible? I mean, can, can they do that? I mean, it, it is, if, if you've got dogs and, and, and they're very sensitive to that, that can be a real problem, dogs or other animals for that matter.
Well, it's not just animals, I guess, to your point, it's.
It's inconvenient for the neighborhood.
It is, right.
You know, vets that may not do well with those kinds of noises, you know, similar to war explosions and things and, um, other individuals, mental health issues and other kinds of things like that, so it's, it's not specific just to animals that might bark more or things of that sort, but, um, I, I don't see why we couldn't, if you wanted to, throw a clause in there or a requirement that. They'd have to put something out, but I feel like we're signaling them out then, compared to anybody else that might be doing this.
Well, I'm not necessarily signaling out legends either, I mean, the church over here has fireworks and, I mean, we, we, we're not limiting it to them. Lilac Acres could come in and, and request the same thing any ti- at any point now, you know, or, or neighbors or any of those places that have tallies could shoot off fireworks too.
Sure.
They can request it. I don't know if there's, I mean, we have the right to say no to all of these. We don't have to give out the permits. We can just deny them, but, you know, like I said, Fourth of July is something that's pretty much common, everybody accepts that, but, like I said, when the neighbors don't know that the eleventh of August, at nine o'clock, there's gonna be a sonic boom going off in the neighborhood and their dogs are, and they're, you know, inconvenienced, they can't sit outside on their patio or whatever, because of the noise. We restrict it to maybe a half an hour from nine to nine-thirty, or, I don't know, there's different things we can do here, I think, you know, there, we can put those things in the, in the clauses and not, we give out the permits. These are the concerns, I guess, I just gave you, I guess, I, I don't know what we wanna do about it, if we wanna, you know, not issue permits at any other time of the year, or just for Fourth of July and then that's it, and make that our ordinance, or are we gonna, how, how restrictive do you wanna get?
Roger? Additional thoughts?
I just, as far as everything, uh, itself is concerned, um. I think if they, I, the, the vehicle by which you notify people around, knowing that, I mean, we're sitting, watching TV the other night and these fireworks are going off, my wi- it's not the dogs, it's, my wife is going, what the heck was that, kinda thing, you know? And it's just kinda startling to you, you know, that's it, you know, we can get through it. My thoughts are that we have to have a mechanism for notifying people around you, if it's gonna be a substantial, a sta- a substantial fireworks, and I don't know what substantial is, I mean, uh, one that's going to be quite, uh, quite noticeable. So, I don't know what to say.
I'm thought about, what about if you put a sign on front of the business that there's gonna be fireworks here and a, a week in advance, they have a sign saying fireworks on this day that between nine and ten, or nine and nine-thirty, whatever.
Yeah, it's public, you know?
I have a thought on, I, I guess I wanna get the other guys' thoughts first, before I, I guess, explain what I'm thinking as far as what you're saying, Roger, um, as far as when you say it's substantial or not, but, Stu, thoughts?
I guess, yeah, if we can get somebody to, I mean, if we get the people to notify people around their, their neighborhood or whatever, um, I mean, like, I don't wanna shut down River, Fox River Christian Church, or, you know, somebody that wants to have fireworks, but.
So I'll, I'll say there is a difference, because we're identifying two places that are the two that are, are doing these applications. One is already doing notification, uh, Fox River puts it up on their sign, um, on the street, so when you drive by one sixty-four, if you ever look at the sign, it, it's gonna tell you that that event's coming up and the date to it, because they're advertising for additional people to come to it. Merrill Hills is different, um, so if we're requiring something, it's likely then, yeah, that you're gonna have to have yard signs or something out front, but does that get to everybody in the area? Because not everybody takes Merrill Hills like they used to with the new bypass going in, that, you know, Merrill Hills was, I think, a lot more heavily trafficked than it is now, so, um.
That would be something that'd have to go more in the neighborhood, you know, you go up on Oak Knoll and stop behind there and.
Right.
Yard signs, put them out, fireworks, put them out on fifty-nine, I'm, everybody goes down fifty-nine that.
Sure.
Lives there or Sunset. Merrill Hills has frontage on Sunset quite a ways.
I think the difficulty is we're, how, how do we identify what's reasonable and where they post their things? Is it, you know, each location's gonna be different somehow, right? So if, if I were to apply for this and put them in our neighborhood, where do I have to put it compared to where you live and things like that, you know?
Have a radius of the property, that's somebody, I don't know, half a mile radius of the, the event?
Sure.
What would be the closest public road, which is well-used and gets a lot of visibility? Just put it there, we have rules for where we play, place signs, I mean, I've learned that.
I'm just looking at, to, who's, who's affected by that, if you're gonna look at a half a mile radius of the event, you know, I would think that would be the people that are gonna be affected by the noise.
So find the busiest road, maybe, at a crossroads and put something in there.
Well, I think like. Well, if it's in, within that half mile radius, yeah, that'd be the place to do it.
I think like Merrill Hills, if they put one at Merrill Hills Parkway and fifty-nine, and they put one on Sunset at Burnell or somewhere.
Right.
Yeah. And one on Merrill Hills Road, I think that would cover it. But.
Sure.
Maybe we could require them in the application process to let us know, while they're not doing this, they have to make a specific application for this, correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, have them say, okay, and we're gonna put notification signs at this place, this place, and this place. Is that acceptable? I'm sure it will be.
Well, like I said, I think you still have to have some criteria for them to say where they're gonna put them, I mean. They're gonna have some, you gotta give them some direction with where to put them, if you're gonna make it a half a mile radius, a quarter mile radius, I don't know, I guess, with whatever.
I'd think a half mile.
There should be a plenty, I would think.
Is this just for other fireworks or those that are also on the.
Make your phone. Right, and like the church has it on their website and it's advertised in all kinds of places that way too, so like, how much do we?
Well, the church is kinda what I was getting at, if you had something to that effect, but not everybody's got a sign like the church has, you know, to do this, so.
Yeah. Why make them do additional when they've already, they're advertising.
Oh, you're saying?
They're, they're already advertising to bring you in, so that they have more people coming to it, right? Where Merrill Hills is a, a private event for members, correct?
Right.
So it's, it's different. Somebody like Fox River is doing more than enough advertising, because they're trying to draw more and more people into their event. So why would we require them to do more by throwing out more signage when they're already, which, maybe they will anyways, because it's another way to advertise, but I don't know that we would necessarily need to for that circumstance. We know Merrill Hills does it every year, the neighborhood knows it's done for Fourth of July, so.
I guess that was my point, everybody's acceptable on the Fourth of July.
Right. I'd say, if you're gonna try and regulate something like that, I would suggest then, you consider that it's the non-Fourth of July event. Um, Al?
I'd like to at least put a time limit, I guess, so on it, I guess, that'd be, so you don't shoot them off for an hour, hour and a half, or they have a half hour, forty-five minute timeframe, so at least the people know that it's gonna be done in a certain amount of time, I think that'd be something that I, I don't yet do. And the other thing is, I mean, this is so the people know that we're, you know, trying to deal with the situation, this fireworks is, we, we can put it on our own website, right, the village board website itself, so I think we should publish that, so at least.
Certainly.
We can put that on our website. Well, I'm just saying, at least we try to give the public as much, at least if they web, read our website, they, at least we know we notified, it must be good. But I'd like to see a timeframe on it for sure, if we could.
Do you think forty-five minutes is an?
I would say nine to, I would say nine to ten. Nine to ten, I mean, most of them shoot them off probably from nine fifteen to nine thirty, nine forty-five, so they should be done by ten.
I don't know, you don't wanna go with a specific time like that. Reason being, if it's, um, well.
So ten to eleven is okay?
I guess what I'm getting at is, for those that would do a wedding in November or December, that wanna do fireworks for that, they may not wanna do them specifically at nine, because of, um, you know, whatever their, their event is for that night, I, I, I guess what I was getting at is more on the side of, if it has something to do with when sun goes down and things like that, because that's obviously changing.
I'm looking at it from the standpoint, people wanna sleep at night, they're gonna.
Yeah, I'm not saying that you make it later, so that they're going off at midnight, that's not the case either, but.
Ten o'clock seems to be the time people complain the most, so after ten.
Maybe not having a window, maybe cutting it off at a specific time.
I think that's good, yes, that's an excellent idea.
So not saying that it's between nine and ten, because again, if it's a, a December thirty-first wedding, they may want to do it at six P M. when it's dark already.
How about till one hour after sunset?
Well, that's, that's what I was kind of starting to get at.
Exactly, I mean, that makes the most sense.
That's making fireworks really early in the winter then compared to, like, tonight.
But we don't have to rewrite it for every event then. If everybody knows that it's one hour after sunset, then they have to abide by that.
Right, but I guess my point though is if it's one of these weddings, that, that's like, on a January fifth wedding night, just making up a date, that's like dinnertime, so now they're pushing off dinner to have fireworks before dinner versus later, where I'd say if you're going to limit it, that it's just, to your point, Bob, of allowing people to sleep, you don't allow the fireworks beyond a certain time of night, so cut it off at ten P M. If you launch them at seven P M. at night in the winter, then it's fine, if you launch them at nine thirty at night in the summer, fine, but they got to be done by ten.
I think that would solve a lot of complaints, is the ten o'clock cutoff.
So it was alluded to initially, I think, in the, the first meeting, this was all discussed, so it's not really being discussed tonight, I just want to clarify, nobody's suggesting that we limited to just the fireworks on the fourth of July timeframe then, correct?
Correct. Yeah, no, we're, we're giving the.
So it's year round?
Leeway, yes.
Okay. All right, so then, the, yes, it's one of the things I was going to discuss, I guess, because I was going to be strongly opposing that if it was just the fourth of July week or weeks before and after. Roger, to your question or comment as far as substantial, the firework size and such, I guess I'll leave the, the, it's not so much on the size of the fireworks, it's the fact that they're doing this legally or not. So if we're really concerned about the fireworks, above and beyond anything that's in our current ordinance and language of it, or changing this ten P M. cutoff or the signage before the event, those folks are doing this legally. They're, they're going through the process of obtaining an application, they're paying the fees, they're coming in and asking for the village for a permit, they're obtaining the, the liability insurance and everything that needs to go with it to, to fall in line with ordinances and our directives that way.
Okay.
They're doing this legally. Really, the issue isn't those two to five events a year across the village, it's what's going on, like, like you said last night, or tonight, or tomorrow night, or at midnight tonight, like, one of my neighbors likes to do randomly with one mortar randomly at one A M. Those are the folks that aren't doing it legally, because Wisconsin has laws in place as far as discharge of these, we have ordinances for it. So if we want to crack down on something that's affecting dogs and neighbors and all the rest of it, then I would say that the directive from the board probably should be to the, to the village deputy that there's more enforcement action occurring on all the, what I'll refer to as illegal fireworks, because those are the individuals buying from the different stores across the state or elsewhere, and then they're launching on their own will at any given hour of the day or night without permission, without the permits and all the rest of it that goes with them. So that's what's obnoxious, if you're going to look at anything to, to be regulating and enforcing, is we already have laws and ordinances in place and it's the hundreds of, of nights or residences that are doing that throughout the summer that are doing them. So I, I personally, I guess I'm not overly opposed to a ten P M. cutoff, I, I don't know if the signs is really going to be the answer.
I'm going to tell you that signs are going to be a problem in twofold, one is that they probably violate the ordinance.
For signs?
And secondly, because they're off from the signs.
Right.
And they're going to be in the right of way.
Yep.
And then we have a safety issue of they're in the right of way and they could be blocking vision triangles and it would be a lot of work and potential liability. I can't recommend, other than if they're on their property in a legal location on their legal sign, like the church does. So I just want to throw those out, I wanted to wait to say that until you get done with the investigation, but.
I agree wholeheartedly with you, John, that, of, of what's being discussed so far, I guess my, my personal opinion would be is if anything that we add to the ordinance, a cutoff timeframe, that anything past ten P M. isn't allowed, regardless of where it is in the village, so.
The cutoff idea is, 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 is prime as far as this is concerned ultimately and that's, and to Bob's point, that's where he gets, you know, most of the communication is about over and above past certain areas where it's perplexing for people and so we just invoke a, a ten P M. cutoff as far as you can't have it after that and let the constituents who are doing it legally manage themselves as, because they're coming in and, and going through the paperwork, they are going to pretty much accept they're going to be responsible citizens anyways. I like the cutoff idea.
Anything else, gentlemen?
I have one. I don't know how old this is or how, who puts the liability insurance on this, but does it ever go up, like, the minimum amount that they put down is five hundred thousand, is that normal, should be increased, or should it stay the same, I guess? I'm just, I don't know, but I know that five hundred thousand dollars, if something would go bad, I don't think goes very far.
Okay.
Problem is the lawyers, even the insurance brokers won't tell you how much money they have, because if they say, go with a million and you got sued for two million, then they get sued for saying a million was enough. So, I can't say that I think the vast majority of communities would require a minimum of a million at this point, and some are requiring five million from what I've seen. That's all I can report, I'm not recommending a million or five million, I'm just saying what I've seen out in the, in the field, five hundred thousand is probably pretty low. But if, if everything's done correctly and you stay under the municipal cap, the maximum you're supposed to be able to be sued for is fifty thousand dollars, but that could be twenty people, you know, each at fifty thousand dollars. And there are situations where fireworks have gotten around the cap, kind of like, for instance.
I'd just like to, you know, maybe adjust that if we could, I mean, that conversation, I guess, I would, I like to raise it, in my opinion, I think five hundred thousand dollars today is, if a guy's house burns or starts a guy's house on fire or, or a bad thing happens and a audience of, again, a number of people, five hundred thousand ain't going nowhere.
Okay.
That's, that's a good point.
I agree with that, I think probably a million at least.
I agree.
All right, so, um, sounds like ten P M. cutoff is something you guys are interested in and then raising to one million for the insurance clause under one E, or E one, excuse me. Are you wanting to do something signage wise? I guess more to decide maybe what John's explaining or discussing with, on their property? Or, we could do the village website either way, we don't have to change ordinances for that.
And the other thing you can do on it is a case-by-case basis, if it's a wedding totally out of the fourth of July period of time, you know, you, you could just make it as a condition, keep that in the mind, in, in your mind, that you, if you rewrite the ordinance, you can say the, the, um, village board has the right to require notification by the petitioner, you know, and place a condition on the permit to that, and so you could look at it and say, you know, it's, it's this weekend and fourth of July is the next weekend, you may not need as much notice as the wedding in, you know.
October, you know.
Totally be, totally like surprised and shocked, so you can do it that way on a case-by-case basis, I mean, we're not going to discriminate, don't get me wrong, I mean, I prefer not to have to do that, but, you know, in a unique situation, you could put reasonable conditions on it.
Do we have to change ordinance at that effect then, or is that just?
Well, I'd recommend you put them on notice that you can place reasonable conditions on them, if you're going to change the ordinance anyway, to change the insurance or to make other changes, you know, at the ten o'clock, I would suggest that we add that, so they're not surprised if you put a condition on it.
Okay. Anybody thoughts on that?
I agree.
Okay. All right, we will.
I have one thing, going back to what Sandy's comment about fees and stuff at the beginning of the meeting, I, I see no numbers in here at all, I don't, I don't know where they are.
They're on the permit application.
But there's no numbers in the ordinance, is what I'm saying.
That's because you don't want it there.
Right, it's by resolution like we did last, the last meeting with.
Nothing, nothing, the only numbers that are in there are for the insurance.
I'm looking online, but.
Where'd you see that, Sandy?
Uh, he can't.
From one of the applications.
Yeah, it's on the applications, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I guess we should decide what the numbers are and see if we want to raise them or not.
Yeah, so if you're in sixteen dash two, which is this one, that was handed out, D. Five, so the back of the page, top of the back page, it says permit fee established by resolution, so just like we did with the mobile food trucks at the last meeting, same setup. We got to do a resolution to change the fee structure that way.
Okay.
All right, we will, we'll move on then, we'll look at some proposed changes then based on the discussion tonight.
And then we'll make it, we'll be ma- making a, an agenda on items so that we can vote on it in a month, or what?
We can't just, this wasn't a proper way to change the ordinance, we have to draft the language, like we did with.
Sure.
The mobile food truck and like we did with.
Yeah.
The secondary or, secondary structures, accessory structures, like we did with chicken coops and things at the last meeting as well.
Okay.
So we'll have to draft changes to the ordinance, bring that back to everybody to be voted on.
Sounds like a plan.
All right, that brings us up then to payment of the bills.
That will move to pay the bills in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand, twenty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Uh, make the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and seconded to approve the payments of the bills in the amount specified.
Have some discussion.
Is there a discussion?
Why, are we paying the city of Waukesha for a culvert that's in their area?
It's not.
Grand Valley?
No, it's in the village.
Is it?
Yeah, it's down south of fifty-nine.
So they're replacing the culverts in our village?
So, okay, I guess going back to D P W. stuff, we looked at the pricing, got bids from places like Stark to replace a culvert that was a crossroad culvert at that intersection on Elk Valley just west of the intersection, it degraded in the center of the road and caused a hole to come through the road, so Rob reached out to Stark and got a price, they talked to other contractors, got prices through his connections and his prior employment, he spoke to the Public Works for the city of Waukesha, and they agreed to come out and do the work for a substantial cost savings, and so their crew came out, they're billing us for the work instead of going to a private contractor for it.
Okay.
So it saved us, I don't have the exact dollar amount, but it was at least twenty-five hundred dollars if I recall correctly from Rob and I discussing it.
Okay.
I think you're missing the obvious, they didn't have the person power or the equipment to do it.
Correct, yeah, we don't have the equipment to do that.
They should give the obvious, I mean, they wasn't in-house because they weren't able to do it, so they went out and got the estimates.
It's, it's just like how Workman's doing ditch stuff for us, because we don't have the equipment for that.
Okay.
Yep. No, so that's, good question. Any other discussion? All right, it's been moved and seconded by Bob and Roger to authorize the payment of the bills for the one hundred and twelve thousand, twenty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents, those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes, adjourned.
Make a motion, adjourn.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Okay.
Jeez, come on.
I'm trying. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous, we're closing.
I thought you were going to sleep there for a second.